Please rise to the invocation of Reverend Mark Andrews, Pastor St. Luke's, Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Sovereign God, Author of justice and mercy, we covet your presence with us in this evening. People will speak; may they also be eager to listen. Emotions will be felt; may they be guided by grace and self-control. Opinions will be expressed; may they be offered respectfully. Decisions will be made; may they be for the good of all in this time and in time to come. We thank you for those who offer their time and passion to lead and govern, give them patience and wisdom to offer their best, and may those of us who are governed do the same. Bless also their support staff and all those who work in service to our city. May the sacrifice of Christ set us an example to follow, and may the promise of Easter raise us to new hopes and possibilities. May all that is done this evening be for the good of Hickory, in service to your kingdom, and for your greater glory. Amen.
Thank you all very much. You did a very pretty job today. I don't hear any complaints. When we don't hear complaints, that means people are really doing well. Thank you all.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 1st? I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, and all members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
A second.
Motion by Guest, second by Lael. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Will be approved.
Second.
Motion by Meister, second by Patton. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Moving right along. First public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your first public hearing this evening is to consider an economic development agreement with OHM Holdings LLC. I'll give you a little bit of background on this project, but I'm not going to steal the thunder of our presenters in a minute. I'll turn the podium over to Paul Thompson, who's the founder and chairman of Transportation Insight, and Scott Millar, who is no stranger to these chambers, our president of the Economic Development Corporation. But this is really a red-letter day for the city of Hickory and Transportation Insight, something that we've been working on pretty diligently for almost a year and then really picked up steam in the last several months, the opportunity for Transportation Insight to make a significant investment in the city of Hickory with their corporate headquarters and really a campus. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Thompson, and then he'll split some time with Mr. Millar prior to you all opening the public hearing.
Well, Council, thank you for your time. Transportation Insight, and I'm going to go over just a little bit of brief information. Transportation Insight was founded here in Hickory in 1999. We've been a very blessed company. If you look at the chart that we have up here, we're in the enterprise logistics space. What's interesting about transportation, I'm industrial engineer by education, and the last thing I ever thought I'd be was a trucker. And I think sometimes the good Lord knows more than we do because I didn't realize that transportation and logistics is number two in the economy, second only to medicine. And so we're proud to be in that sector, and we're also proud to be a big player in the community because it's one of the vibrant areas that our economy can continue to grow, not just with us, but in other ways, just like the Target Distribution Center that we have. But basically, we have 40 offices across North America. We have 400 clients. Our clients are enterprise, and when we handle the client, we handle it all. And a lot of our clients are Fortune 1000 clients. Those clients have over 400,000 shipping locations. We manage over $1.6 billion in supply chain spending. One of the things that's been phenomenal about our organization, we've been able to recruit a really strong leadership team. We have 17 officers in our company that average over 500 years of experience in our industry. So we've been recognized within North America as one of the leading providers by a number of organizations. Few of the more notable ones, Inc. 500, we've made the Inc. 500 seven years in a row, which is almost unheard of. Even in our local regional area, in Charlotte's Business Journal, Fast 50, we were number one in the Charlotte Fast 50 in revenue growth. And then within North Carolina, over the last six years, we've climbed into the top 100 to the 17th largest privately-held company in North Carolina. So one of the things you'll find about us, we don't beat our drum a lot. There's a lot of people in Hickory that have no idea who we are, but nationwide, we're one of the top 10 providers in our specific space. Moving on to the topic that we have at hand today. Transportation Insight today has 151 associates in Hickory, North Carolina. Our business plan over the next six years is to more than triple our business. And to do that, we are about out of space where we're at, and the people that we lease our facilities from today, particularly First Baptist Church, would like to have that facility back. So we've been really forced into, through growth and through the need to move, to be looking at corporate campuses. Today, we own the land in, that is, the Crown Hill above the Henry River soccer field, which is actually in the city of Longview. We bought that land about 10 years ago with the intention of building a comms coat-type corporate headquarters there. And where we sit today, though, is we continue to recruit a very vibrant, educated, often a lot of kids out of school, college, four-year degree people, as well as professionals around the country. So the thing we're finding and challenged with since 2011, we've hired 57 college graduates since January 2011, and we've recruited a number of executives from other parts of the country. And so what we're finding is those people are, they want a more vibrant lifestyle. They want to walk to lunch. They want to have outside activities. They want to have physical facilities to do things. And so we have had both internal and external kind of at a crossroads about whether we want to sustain our corporate headquarters in Hickory, North Carolina, where it was founded, or should we move to Charlotte. And I would say that that's a mixed bag. Probably two-thirds of our people who live here and have been in this area would love to see us stay here. There's probably a third of our organization that would like to see us move someplace with a little bit more activity, a little more vibrancy. And so when we're in a position today with the kind of growth that we're at, we had to make a decision, and quite frankly, we've made the decision that is our desire, to retain our corporate headquarters here and to grow our business here. And so we were fortunate to, this particular facility, I've been looking at and working on the old Lowery Mill for three years. We finally have reached an agreement to acquire the mill, and we have closed on it. The mill itself is this building. It's about 40,000 square feet of space. It is one of the original hosiery mills in the area. What you see here is the second floor. It has a lot of, it's all hardwood flooring, hardwood ceilings, so we'll be putting that back to historic restoration. We've also got a contract, and we'll be closing on this property next week behind there to build an overall corporate campus. This is a top view of what that campus would look like. This is parking. This is parking. This is the mill facility. This is the new expanded facility that I'll show you visuals on in just a second. What you'll see here is a full-size gymnasium that we intend to build for basketball, for our associates, and we also intend to make that available to community organizations. We have the majority of the land behind here under contract. We intend to also build athletic fields for our people's use and green space, as well as people in the community. In this section of the building, we'll be building exercise facilities, showers. Basically, what we want is our, and on this area of the building right here, which I'll show you in a minute, we're going to be building a cafeteria where we'll have a chef that'll be preparing healthy meals every day. So one of the things we all fight is to have, we're self-insured, and we want to be able to sustain our ability to have healthy employees and happy employees. So we're going to create a lifestyle business, picture these people getting out at lunch, having some good exercise, maybe here in the outside green spaces we have, come back in, take a shower, have lunch over here, and then go back to work. So this is a top view of what we expect the campus to look like. This again is the mill building. What you see here right now is a metal warehouse. Our intention is for this to be the cafeteria for us, where we have both inside dining and outside dining, with a breezeway between these two buildings. The building here shows two major expansions on the front of it, with a tremendous amount of aesthetics here, and this may give you a top view of what the gymnasium at the end of that may look like. This is what we expect the front view of the old Hickory Mill to look like. If you notice this art deco look from the early '30s, we intend not only to sustain it, but continue to develop it. You see here some of the outside dining areas. One of the things we'll do throughout this facility is move power lines and really put a lot of green space there to the extent we can. So when you cross that ridge coming down 127, this property is literally at the crossroads of, you know, the centroid of Hickory, and it'll be one of the first things you see when you enter our community. So instead of seeing the dilapidated mill that exists there, we're going to develop an office complex today with about 70,000 square feet of office space, and I haven't added up the acreage. It's really been a challenge. We've had to get contracted 11 different parcels owned by 14 different people. And so it's been a yeoman's chore, but we finally are to the point that we've been able to do that. So this is the view from 127 looking to the southeast. What you see today in this mill facility here is the most common view, because usually when you cross this hill, you don't really notice it. The cobbler shop is up here, but when you cross this hill, this is the view people see. So not only will we be developing this mill, we'll be developing this complex behind the mill, making that into a complete office park and really enhancing that entire corridor. This is what the other building would look like. Quite frankly, it's the one that you see the most aesthetic change because in the mill building, we'll want to sustain the mill aesthetics and everything about the mill and the way that it looks. This building will have a lot more liberty to be turning it into something that's got a little bit more modern look, but yet tied into the building. Our desire is, when we put these two buildings together, for them to look like they were built in a similar fashion, in terms of style, in terms of color. This is another side view looking up Third Street at the mill facility here and the crosswalk into the other facility. Basically, when we look at where we're headed with this, we are excited to be able to make a commitment to the city of Hickory. I will tell you, the biggest challenge that I have within our workforce is for our organization and the people in our organization to have more outside activities. I'll use myself as an example. I am really excited about the farmer's market that we build. I mean, my wife and I are very active. We get up on Saturday morning. I live at Catawba Country Club. There's no place to ride bikes around here. So we get on our bikes, and we take our life in our hands to come up 127, all the way from Catawba Country Club, to be able to come to the farmer's market and have breakfast. And so this group, in making this investment in this corridor, I also say we're following suit, you know, with Mr. Zacharoli, with the Holler Mill, with what's going on with John Morretts, and a number of other scenarios. But I would challenge this organization to look at the vibrancy of the cities that truly are changing, that truly are attracting workforces. You look at Greenville as an example. You look at Asheville as an example. I have a place in downtown Charlotte. Let me tell you, there are cranes everywhere. And so the young workforce that exists today, the young workforce that works for me, they want activities daily. And I'm not talking about they're looking for, you know, bars and hangouts. They want to get up on Saturday morning. They want to go someplace and have outside breakfast. They want to have green space. They want to have places to ride their bikes. And so one of the things I'll challenge is, is that the taxpayer that's going to be paying our bills 15 years from now has not got the same motivation as the taxpayer we have today. My children don't want the big house in the suburbs. They don't want to mow the yard. They don't want to collect a lot of things. A lot of them rent, and they want daily and weekly activities, and they want outside spaces, and they want things to do. So we're going to make a major investment to create a campus that's going to give that to our people, and I'm seeing other businesses that are doing that in the community. But I really challenge Council to be looking towards the cities that are becoming and become more vibrant and what they really mean. So I'll close by telling you, my daughter goes to University of Georgia. Three weeks ago, I got in the car and drove two hours to meet her in downtown Greenville. We picked downtown Greenville because we spent three hours walking around and enjoying it. My wife and I literally go to downtown Greenville and rent a hotel room and spend the weekend there and enjoy it. And so, you know, we are sitting here in a nucleus with two major hospitals, lots of restaurant expansion. When I moved here 20 years ago, there were three restaurants in town. We've got great restaurants here. We've got great hospital infrastructure, but we don't have great outside living, and somehow we have to solve that. And the businesses can begin that, but some of that's going to have to be through government and municipality, and I'll challenge you to think about that. Because those 57 employees I got, the highest turnover I have in my organization are the young people I hire, and we do exit interviews, and number one reason is nothing to do with Hickory. And I would challenge us to figure out all how we're going to solve that. Thank you.
Paul, I'd like to live in the city you're talking about. That's a really neat project. It's been a pleasure to work with you and your company, company of character, men of character, and project that we're talking about of character. I applaud what your plans are for this area. I came here looking, and actually, when I first started coming to Hickory, it was because of the bike shop that was located. Dave and Cheryl Lance had that bike shop located right across the street from this project. And, you know, I've been looking at this site for many, many years, and this piece of property, I would say, ever since I've been coming to Hickory, 30 years or so, has been underutilized, and certainly has been vacant for the last recent two or three years. For what you get mine started, thanks. This corporate campus will provide the profile that we're talking about to drive many of the changes that we're talking about within the city of Hickory. I would characterize this as a landmark property. How many times have you come down First Avenue and turned right onto 127, and you've looked over at that and just gone, gosh, man, that's got some opportunity? So certainly, the influence of this area as a jobs corridor, as you put 200 guaranteed and potential of 300 or 400 professional and service-oriented people on this side of town at this facility, what kind of influence will that have on that whole corridor? And so you've got substantial opportunities there. It just augments what's already going on in that area, certainly with the Holler and the Morretts redevelopments, the cornerstone project down at the other end of Main Avenue with the Piedmont Wagon location. We've got something that's moving here in the city of Hickory, and that is really neat to see, all of these things and what we've done over time. What we started with the Claremont High School and what's now the Salt Block, and all of those projects that, when you put them all together, you realize that this city values historic structures and redevelopment and new opportunities. And so this is just another one of those. I'll talk a little bit specifically about the contractual proposal that we've got in front of you. The holding group that will be owner of this and basically the contracting organization for this, OHM Holdings LLC, it will be the entity that is signing on for the real property development aspect of this project with a minimum expenditure of $6 million above and beyond what's sitting on those properties as of today. The Transportation Insight will be the tenant in that facility. Majority share holders or owners of that, of OHM Holdings are the same as Transportation Insight LLC. There will be additional personal property expenditures, furniture and fixtures and computers and that sort of thing, with at least a minimum of another $1 million of investment. So there's a guaranteed investment threshold of $7 million of expenditures that come with this project. The proposal that we have in front of you would make the opportunity for incentivization of this project up to $8 million in assessed value. Of course, in Transportation Insights or OHM Holdings, they don't want to spend $8 million that realizes in assessed values, but we're giving that opportunity for that. It retains the current Hickory workforce at 151 people, and it would grow that by a minimum of 50 people by May of 2016. The incentive that we're proposing in this contract is based on that maximum assessed opportunity of $8 million, times the 50 cent tax rate for the city of Hickory for seven years, with an individual cap on any year of $40,000. What's good about this proposal is that the timing of any incentive that will be due will, the first year's payment of incentives would come due in or about March of 2016. The required investment and the required jobs will be, the ending date on those is at the end of May 2016. So we're going to have 97% assurance that those investments are going to be made, and those jobs are going to be created before the first incentive is made, and then year two incentive, we would certainly know whether or not. So the timing of these investments works well. Should any failure happen in this project, should the jobs not get made, or should something happen to the company, or the investments not occur, then any incentivization would stop at that point in time. I ask you in closing, certainly we'll be here to answer any questions that you may have specific to the agreements. I've just hit the high points on that. I'd like to point out that this is a performance-based agreement. If the company doesn't perform, then they don't get the incentive. That's the way that all of these have been structured. The highlight here is the opportunity and the vision that has been given to you here in the last few minutes. With that, I'll ask Council for any questions, or ask Paul to come up and take the hard step.
Any questions? I'd like to point out to everyone that we have had considerable time to study this and ask questions. So it's not for lack of interest that we're not asking questions.
Mayor, I don't really have a question, obviously, but I do want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Paul for making the decision not to go to Charlotte this day here.
We're all excited about that. I think I can speak for my fellow councilmen.
Yes, you can.
Go ahead.
You already have.
Same time.
Paul is so used to the railroad that, you know, he didn't miss a beat with.
Okay.
Open the public hearing.
In a moment, we're going to open the public hearing. I'm going to lay out the ground rules quickly. No one has signed up to speak, but we offer both sides, those for and against the proposal, 15 minutes. We start with the people against it. We ask the people to vote for the opposition. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters. We ask the people to vote for the supporters.[1651.37] The required investment and the required jobs will be, the ending date on those is at the end of May 2016. So, we're going to have 97% assurance that those investments are going to be made, and those jobs are going to be created before the first incentive is made, and then year two incentive, we would certainly know whether or not. So, the timing of these investments works well. Should any failure happen in this project, should the jobs not get made, or should something happen to the company, or the investments not occur, then any incentivization would stop at that point in time. I ask you in closing, certainly, we'll be here to answer any questions that you may have specific to the agreements, I'll just, I've just hit the high points on that. I'd like to point out that this is a performance-based agreement. If the company doesn't perform, then they don't get the incentive. That's the way that all of these have been structured. The highlight here is the opportunity and the vision that has been given to you here in the last few minutes. With that, I'll ask council for any questions, or ask Paul to come up and take the hard step.
Any questions? I'd like to point out to everyone that we, we have had considerable time to study this and ask questions. So, it's not for lack of interest that we're not asking questions.
Mayor, I don't, I don't really have a question, obviously, but I do want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Paul for making the decision not to go to Charlotte this day here.
We're all excited about that. I think I can speak for my fellow councilmen.
Yes, you can.
Go ahead.
You already have.
Same time.
And Paul is so used to the railroad that, you know, he didn't miss a beat with.
Okay.
Open the public hearing.
In a moment, we're going to open the public hearing. I'm going to lay out the ground rules quickly. No one has signed up to speak, but we offer both sides, those four and against the proposal, 15 minutes. We start with the people against it. We ask that people be considerate of the fact that other people want to share that 15 minutes. We do not cut people off, and we, anytime people have something to say that's moving the discussion forward, we are not going to be excited too much about the time. After the 15 minutes, then we have five minutes rebuttal, and serve rebuttal. No cheering, no jury. This is a decision we're making for the benefit of the people of Hickory. With that, I'll turn the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I will declare the public hearing closed, and ask for motion or discussion.
I move approval.
Motion by Patton, second by Gess. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
We go back and say enthusiastically aye.
And I would like, I would like also to thank Paul and his company, his fellow officers, his family. This is a great success story for us here in Hickory. You know, the progress that's been made along that railroad track, I don't know about anybody else, but it greatly exceeds what I ever dreamed we might have. And I think, I think each investment is inspiring others.
True, but a lot of it started with our visits to other communities to see how they did it, what they put into place as far as policies to make these things happen. So, we are seeing the fruits of those, those labors, and the domino effect is just tremendous. This is very exciting.
Well, and I heard, I know it seems kind of informal, but we're partners in this, so I've heard, I heard Paul's comments, and his challenge to us. And I want you to know that I, I'm not going to speak for all council, but I think I probably am. You've got my personal commitment that I want us, the taxpayers of Hickory, and us, the voting group that represents them, I want you to know that I am very much behind continued improvement, perhaps, for amenities that I don't even expect to use, but I know are important, if we're going to be a well-rounded, up-and-coming city that we want to be. Any other comments? Zagorod, you've got to weigh in the words, I tell you. Any comments, guys? Okay, thank you all, appreciate it. Next public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next public hearing is to consider the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for 2014, and I'll ask the city's community development manager, Dave Lee and Eddie, to come to the podium and present that to council prior to you opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2014-2015 Annual Action Plan for the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. As most of you know, the city is an entitlement city for this program. We receive an annual allocation from the federal government through the Community Development Block Grant Program. This funding can be used in a number of ways to improve the quality of life in the community, principally for persons of low to moderate income. Just going to go through, I've got a pretty brief presentation tonight, but I'm going to try to hit the highlights for, for you. This year, we've actually gotten our allocation to in April, which is nice, because we, in past years, we've kind of been guessing at this point, but this year, we actually have our allocation, and we're going to receive $310,000 and $314,000 in 2014 through our CDBG allocation. We're also budgeting approximately $235,000 in program income. This includes about $80,000 in carryover from the last, the last two years, we've, we're always fairly conservative when we're budgeting our program income, so we have some carryover funds that have not yet been budgeted. So, that's our way of taking care of that, is to budget them through this process. The total budget is $536,142. Each year, staff, we hold two public meetings in various locations throughout the city to offer the community the opportunity to, to speak and offer their concerns and ideas for priorities for the program, and then we also allow nonprofits the opportunity to apply for funding, and you'll hear from a number of them tonight. We've got a few of them that are in attendance. This is a brief outline of, of each of the major priorities for funding. You'll see, the budget proposes continuing our rehabilitation and purchase program for housing. It also includes some improvements to Optimus Park, I'll talk a little bit more detail about those. Continued funding for Habitat for Humanity, continued funding for infrastructure improvements, continuation of our down payment assistance program, funding for the City of Refuge After-School Program, some funding for community-rich daycare for some improvements to their facility. The Interfaith Housing Development Corporation, that funding is for Phase Two of the Ridgeview Public Library, the former Ridgeview Public Library improvements. That'll address the interior of the structure. This year, over the next probably three to four months, we'll be finishing addressing the exterior of that property. And then, funding for Cooperative Christian Ministries Health Clinic at Alpha, funding for a case manager position, well, a portion of funding for a case manager position. Safe Harbor, funding for their day shelter, the Soup Kitchen for some of their operations, Exodus Homes for their transportation coordinator, general administration of the program and planning activities. That's a little bit of an increase this year, because every year, we do our annual action plan, but every five years, we need to update our consolidated plan, so that'll include some additional, not sure whether we're, haven't decided yet whether we're going to farm that out to a consultant yet, but there is some additional expense associated with, with time for a five-year consolidated plan. And then also, fair housing activities, and normally, that goes towards advertisements. I don't know if you've seen them or not, but every, this is, April is Fair Housing Month, and in conjunction with the Board of Realtors, we, we run a number of ads in the Hickory Daily Record. That's, and then another, an additional awareness activities, but that's one of our things that actually has a cost associated with it. Some of the highlights, this is going to represent Phase One of improvements to Optimus Park, and that's the park in the Green Park neighborhood between Seventh and Ninth Street along Second Avenue Southwest. The big things in the, in this first phase are going to be a walking track, resurfacing of a tennis court, and then some additional improvements, likely to include some improvements to that, there's a building there that's been underutilized for a number of years, some new restrooms that are, the, the restrooms at Optimus Park are somewhat accessible only by a rather treacherous-looking staircase, and so eventually, I don't believe we're going to be able to get to the restrooms with the funding for this year's budget, but I believe next year, we're going to probably try to tackle the restroom issue and some of the additional improvements to that. As I said before, we're going to look at Phase Two of the Ridgeview Public Library, that hopefully, by the time we get done with that next year, that, that will be able to be opened as a community center for, for that area. Again, as I mentioned previously, we're going to be supporting nine local nonprofit organizations next year, and we've also increased public infrastructure funding for street resurfacing and sidewalk projects. And I don't know if you noticed, but the city just finished resurfacing on three streets using community development money in the Kenworth Ridgeview and Green Park neighborhoods. That finished up last week, I believe. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
So, we had, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Lee and Eddie, I'm sorry. We had, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars in program income? Yeah, $235,000.
Yes, sir.
Virtually all of that, or all of that is repayment of loans we've made?
Yes, sir. Most of it's repayment for loans, probably about half, 45% is loans we make to individual homeowners, and then about 55% of that is loans that we make to nonprofits for infrastructure improvements and other items like that.
Let me, let me explain to folks who may not be aware of this, is we have a program, which I guess we're going to be talking about a little bit, too, the Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program. We have a program whereby these funds are loaned to deserving individuals who meet the criteria, and to nonprofits, at a favorable rate of interest, often, if not almost always, in situations where they would not be able to qualify for standard loans. And so, we're helping upgrade the quality of housing and facilities, and then we use the money that's paid back to go back into the program and do things like upgrade Optimus Park and other, other amenities we have, other services. Thank you. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak against this proposal. We have several people who want to speak in favor of the proposal, and I will start with Paula Atwood.
Mayor Wright, city council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, my two minutes, excuse me, my one minute, Dave Lee and Eddie said I was going to have. We now know, a southern girl can't say her name in one minute.
You already used two.
Thank you. Oh, mine's just full of thank yous. Sincerely, I had no idea of the breakdown of that until I saw it on the screen. I am just excited, totally excited. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you to the neighbors. We've got Green Park neighbors here who want to speak to say thank you also. Thank you for the repair of the drainage prob, the ditch in, in Green Park, in Hickory Optimus Park, it's finished. That, that was really good to see finished. The park's back open. Thank you to the Community Development Block Grant Committee for interpreting a buckshot approach that our Green Park neighbor, Ivana Johnson, and I put together very quickly to say, "Can we have some of this money, too, please?" They figured out that we were actually talking about two main options for Hickory Optimus Park. One is safe access. Now, I don't know if you've ever walked down Second Avenue, and I know everybody's going the requisite 35 miles an hour, right, coming into town? Yeah, my late husband and I used to walk it, and him on a walker, it was probably the, one of the dumbest things we'd ever done, but it was, it proved a lot to me. That is not a safe entrance into that park, unless you're driving, maybe a Hummer, but if you're driving, that's the way to get in. We need access to the park from the new Habitat for Humanity Development, the Glen. You have, what, seven homes there already that are full of children of all ages. You've got a distance from here to the highway to get into the park. Use some of the Community Development Block money that you're going to allot for Hickory Optimus Park to prepare a wonderful pavement in, you know, access, a safe access. Hopefully, you'll be able to give us an access from Fourth Street, off of Fourth Avenue, off of Seventh, possibly from Eighth Street, across a small creek of some, of small, I'm using the word small. That would open up the park to the neighborhood on both sides, east and west. They figured out that's what we were trying to say, the, the community, the committee. We're also saying, if you will lay the foundation in the park of the walking track that we've been talking about in our neighborhood since 1997, that's when we had the cook-offs, and we raised, I think, $800, we thought we were going to really do something? Not. We learned, but it's still there. We're willing to add our little $800 to the city's community, or the federal Community Development Block Grant monies, to do what we can to help. But if you will lay the foundation of a walking track, nice broad composition, where people who have strollers, babies, senior citizens on walkers, I've had ladies already calling me saying, "I heard about you, might, we might get a walking track, really? Can we have a walking club?" Ivana, my cohort in crime here, is going to, has grant opportunities. We presented to Deputy Attorney Dula on Friday, a proposal that might, might not, we'll see, allow us, Ivana and I, to work underneath the structure of the city, to actually apply for those grants that you guys wouldn't consider, $1,000. So, we can create the walking clubs and invite the diabetic or the dietitian to come to the club meeting as the seniors walk about, and prepare grilled vegetables on a grill. To come out with a physical therapist who's there when the moms who are trying to jog behind the, the strollers, you know, are trying to figure out, "How am I supposed to do that without getting shin splints?" Those hurt, I know that for a fact. Pushing a wheelchair, yeah, those hurt. Things like that, we would be able to do. If you lay the foundation of this, connecting us, opening up the park, connecting the park, the walking track to other of your master plans, the Greenway Master Plan, the one that comes down from Ridgeview, Seventh Avenue, come up the hill, come down by the Glen, go into the park, I mean, you're, it's like a win, it's like a trifecta, a win-win and a win. And we will build on what you build. And we'll bring Hickory Optimus Park up, hopefully, to this century. Thank you so much. I have the honor of introducing one of our very strong neighborhood families, the Dickinson family. They've signed up to speak next. Is that right?
I've got a damn third.
Third, okay, who's second?
Davis. Davis Coolsmith.
Oh, Darius Coolsmith. He is a member of the Dickerson family. Darius.
Okay.
This is one of our high schoolers in the neighborhood.
Good. Now, I can see Darius.
Yeah. I think the park is beneficial to the neighborhood and all the kids in it, because like, some people might not have transportation really, going to where like the YMCA or Highland, they can like come to the park, that's what I used to do, and also, I like go and walk up to the park and play basketball and baseball, and, yeah, but sometimes, like, I think the track, not the track, but the little pathway to go to the park from, not really from the street, but you know, from behind in the woods, I think that would be easier, too, because it, I mean, you can do it in the winter, walk through the woods, we have a little trail, but in the summer, when all the grass and stuff grows in, you really can't do it. And like, I go to my friends, "You going to go to the park?" They're like, "Nah, can't really go, because of the grass." So, we're like, "Okay, we're just going to stay at the house." Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Darius.
This is Terry Dickerson, and their younger son, Dayton.
The park is special to me because I learned how to ride my bike there, and I walk to the park with my brother there, and thank you for upgrading the park.
Thank you. Good job.
And the mother of the family is Felicia Dickerson, she's declined to speak. I do have a letter I'd like to hand out real quick. Ann Henson, who's a member of our board, Executive Board of Green Park Neighborhood Association, wanted me to hand this to you, read it to you. "I've lived in Green Park for many years, first as a child, where I attended Green Park School, and later as an adult. My husband and I bought a home there and raised two children. The park was always important to us, and we used it regularly. There were always children there playing, ballgames to go to, and it was a great place to have a picnic. It has a one, it has been a wonderful asset to the Green Park neighborhood. Hearing that plans were in the process to refurbish our park was exciting. Both children and adults will again be able to enjoy the park and all it will have to offer. Ann Henson, sincerely." Thank you, Senator.
Thank you all. Austin Pierce.
Mayor Wright, council members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, nice to see all of you again. Certainly, I am here to, to speak for the Community Development Block Grant, which continually and consistently helps fund our operation at the Soup Kitchen. I just wanted to come and kind of tell you kind of where we're at, and, and what we do. I just wanted to come and kind of tell you kind of where we're at and, and what we've been doing. Want to mention that last year we served 80,819 plates to the hungry in this community. Now, we've been, we've been there 31 years. We've had your support all 31 of those years and we certainly appreciate it again this year. It makes that possible. Now, I will say, I came in in 2010, four years ago, and we served 41,432 plates. And we were jamming. That had doubled since the year 2005. I thought surely to goodness it can't get any busier than this, but I was wrong. And what we have found, we've begun to do a lot of surveys. What I have found is, is that I need to know where these people are coming from. I need to know what they think they need, other than encouragement and hope, a warm meal, the things that we provided. And what we have found is, is that 55% of our people are not homeless. 45% are. We also found out that 35% of everybody we serve, 35% was working in 2008. Most of which, 80% were working full time, about 20 were working part time. Now that's 2008. Now that 35%, very capable people, very proud people. Most of them have lived here for generations. Their families have lived in this, this county, this town for generations. And that is, that is the upsurge. You know, Christ said it, we'll always have the poor. That's why the Soup Kitchen was created, was for folks who could not take care of themselves, folks who were in desperate crisis need. And what we have seen is, is this influx of, of folks who, who were living just above the poverty line. Those surveys, they, they're really coming in handy because what it's telling us is, is what obstacles are in the way and what obstacles we can remove. Now, we are about food, there's no question. That is our mission. It has become easy for us though. We moved over $1 million in in-kind food donations last year. We supplemented food pantries for every nonprofit that you had on that board tonight. Every one and another six on top of that. Everybody from the Pregnancy Care Center to Alpha, Safe Harbor, we'll continue to do that. But we, we have found that that 35%, we want to move them along. We have found that through collaboration with other agencies, which is going on now like it's never gone on before, we are able to do that. There was a program recently, Councilman Zagoroli heard about at the same time I did. It's a wonderful program called Furniture Fundamentals. Six large furniture companies got together and created this program, this class at CBCC for folks. Scholarships are provided for it. What they do is, is they train these folks through this 18-week program. And when they show up at Vanguard with that certificate, they hire them. They hire them right then because they designed the program, they designed the class. These are the kind of relationships that we have begun to develop over the last two or three years. Because frankly, I need those numbers to go back down. I really need them to go back down. It would, it would, it would help the whole community. But these are folks that have lived here a long time and we owe it to them to help them during this time. And, and that's what we plan on doing. That's kind of our vision for the future. Just a couple of other numbers that I wanted to leave you with. We did, we do do a food pantry. We give out groceries like other ministries do. It's really supplemental. But we were able to support 150 families with about 270 bags of groceries every month. We're only open about 20 to 22 days a month. We also provided average of 270 showers, 20, 22 days. That's it. That's a lot of showers. It's a lot of cups of coffee. But that is what we feel will create an environment for folks to get a good start to their day. Maybe get them on that bus to get the Not Out program down at CBCC, get them a hot shower, cup of coffee. So those are some of the kind of things that we're, we're doing. And we certainly appreciate all your support. I would like, if there are any kind of questions about what's going on or, or what we've been up to, what we're up to in the future, from any of the council members or anyone else here?
Frank Moses still coming and working?
Not enough. He got a job. Young folks. I tried to tell him, you know, that education's first and foremost. And that's part of what we do too. We certainly encourage education. You know, the Get the Not Out program, I don't know if y'all know about this, but getting the obstacles out of people's way. Lamar Mitchell, what a great idea, Champions of Education. And we refer to a lot of people, we've had three since January. One who could not read, a 49-year-old male who has had a job this whole time, could not read. I found out he couldn't read because I asked him to label some noodles. He was volunteering for me about three days a week. Works at a nursing home here locally. And I found out he couldn't read. I asked him to label some spaghetti noodles on a bucket. And that's how I found out. But I'm telling you, once he got over to CBCC, they called me like three days later and to inform me that he had placed out of his math, remedial math. Guy can't read a thing, but he places out at 49-years-old, hasn't been in school for decades, placed out of his remedial math. Recognizing talent and, and giving people the confidence, that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to get into. The food, first and foremost, that will always be our mission. But as long as this community keeps, keeps, you know, pouring us with food donations, we can make that, that part go. If we could move along that, that 35%, I'd sure like to see that happen in the next couple, couple of years, for sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your enthusiasm.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your work. And I, I viewed it the other day and it is very encouraging. And we eventually want to make it so you don't have a job, if you know.
I would love that. I would volunteer more.
But thank you again.
Yes, sir. Thank counsel, Aaron.
Thank you, sir. And Angela Heard.
Mayor Wright and City Council, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about the City of Refuge After School Program. This is our 10th year of doing this program in the Ridgeview community. We've worked with Parks and Recreation to use the Brown Penn Senior Citizens Building in the community. Last year we had about 21 attendees. Our children won over 30 academic and perfect attended awards. So we were very pleased with that as well, trying to work to make a difference. We have about 22 attendees with us this year. So we're very appreciative of the partnership that you've given us to work in the Ridgeview community and to help the children. And I had a letter, in fact, the teacher just gave this to me a few weeks ago. It says, Ms. Angie, "Thank you for loving our kids on the City of Refuge van. I do pick up at some of the schools and I also go to the bus stops." And she said, "I have seen a great improvement in this child's reading since he has started there. I credit your hard work for this. I pray that God will continue to bless you and, and as you continue to pour out blessings unto our students." So I was very appreciative of that. Lets me, lets us know that we're headed in the right direction. I am appreciative of the block grant money because it does help us with our part-time staffing as well. So we couldn't, we couldn't do it. It takes those collaborations. Lenore Ryan University helps us as well with our volunteers. So we're very appreciative. They're invaluable to us. They are very committed and I appreciate that as well. So it really takes all those pieces of the puzzle for it to come together and to make sure the child is successful. So we're very pleased and we ask that you continue to support us as we try to help the children and build that foundation.
Anyone else want to speak? Isn't it great to hear these positive words by such enthusiastic people?
That collaboration that has come about is really exciting too.
Wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I'd make a motion that we approve of the development block grant 2014.
Mr. Guess, I gotta close the public hearing first, okay? I'm excited about it. I'm teasing you. I'm teasing you. I declare the public hearing closed and Mr. Guess is gonna make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this action plan for 2014.
I'll second that.
Motion and multiple seconds, but we're gonna give it Mr. Guess and Mrs. Patton. How's that? Any discussion, other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It's unanimous. Okay.
Departmental reports. Before I call on Mr. Warren Wood, I'm reminded of a cartoon back in my big budget days with the county when that's all I did. Someone gave me a cartoon one time of peanuts. And you had Snoopy saying, anytime somebody has a good idea, someone else always brings up the budget. So. To just bring all, bring all of our enthusiasm and happiness back down to budget level.
Mayor Wright, members of City Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone.
Yeah, we've had so much optimism, good news, feeling uplift, and now you get me. So that doesn't seem quite right. If I was to make a motion to not to do the financial report, I would be okay with that. Okay. Well, there's, there's elements of being positive in here. This is the quarterly finance report for the, end of the third quarter of the, of the fiscal year. So we've got nine months under our belt. Take a look and see how we're doing so far. We're gonna look at four things. First off, year-to-date revenues and expenditures, how we're looking there. Some highlights from Wells Fargo, their economic outlook for North Carolina and how that relates to us. We're gonna talk about the upcoming budget development meetings that we're gonna have that are on the horizon. About where we are with that. And then lastly, just kind of look back as a, as a, as setting you up for the meetings that we're getting ready to have, just a reminder of a lot of the work that we have done from a budget and managerial perspective on presenting you with a balanced budget every year. So some of the things that we've done. So I've got about 10 slides, so if you can, you can hang with me through 10 slides, it'll, it'll be over. Okay. Again, the general fund, we'll take a look at the general fund. It's a $45 million fund, so it's half of the city's overall budget of $90 million. Through the first nine months, we've received 81% of our budgeted revenues. Our five-year average says we should be at 79%. So we're running ahead on the collection side. So that's, that's good news on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we've spent or incurred about 70% of our budgeted revenues. And our five-year average says that's right where we should be. So the bottom line for the general fund, revenues over expenditures, taking out encumbrances, we have collected $7.1 million more than we've spent. The five-year average would say that we would have collected $5.3 million more than we spent. So, so far through the fiscal year, we're, we're on budget, probably ahead of budget, doing okay. We're not seeing a lot of growth in revenues, but we're meeting our budget projections. So general fund, so far so good through, through nine months. And y'all stop me if you have questions or comments. Water and Sewer Fund, that's a $20 million fund. So between the general fund and the water and sewer fund, that makes up 75% of your total budget. So with 75% of the year complete, same kind of story with the water and sewer fund, so far so good. We've collected 69% of our budgeted revenues. Our five-year average says we should be just over 68, so we're running a little bit ahead there. We've spent or incurred 64% of our budget expenditures. Five-year average says we should be about there. So bottom line, revenues over expenditures in the water and sewer fund, taking out encumbrances, we're at $1.8 million more collected than expended and that's right where our five-year average says we should be. So the good news is, there's not much news there and so that's good news. So we're right where we should be at this point in the fiscal year. So that's, that's good. Wells Fargo, I'll look at, they've, they've got some outstanding economists and they, for the month of April, they did an economic outlook for the state of North Carolina and looked specifically at western North Carolina as well as the metro areas throughout the state. And I'm gonna apologize for the text I'm gonna give you on this slide, but there are three kind of quotes that kind of struck me. One of them was, "North Carolina's textiles apparel and furniture industries have struggled mightily against the onslaught of competition unleashed by NAFTA and the rise of China." So I would say, over the last 14 years, that's been specifically during that time span, is when we've been, you know, pretty harshly impacted by, by NAFTA and the rise of China. I think that sentence pretty much captures what we've been facing internationally here, here locally. The second thing that kind of struck me was, on a national basis, manufacturing employment posted year-over-year declines every month from August 98 through 2010. So that's, that's pretty dramatic. I mean, that was a tremendous amount of loss nationally in manufacturing during that time span. And we definitely saw it. We're, our manufacturing employment base in the metro area is 30% of all employment. When I moved to, moved back to Hickory 21 years ago, it was 50%. So that's been a steady, pretty consistent decline over that time, time span. And lastly here, excluding Asheville, because that's a different kind of economy in the Asheville area, the western part of the state employs 18% of all its workers in manufacturing. And keep in mind, Hickory's 30%. Statewide, that number's 11% and nationally, the number's 9%. So our employment base in Hickory is three times the national average in manufacturing. So we have been impacted three times as much as the rest of the nation proportionally in terms of what NAFTA and China has done to us locally with manufacturing in terms of the employment. So that, that just provides some context. You don't know where you're going forward if you don't look back and see where you've been. So that's why I put that up there. This is, I've got, I've got this negative slide and one more, then it gets better, gets more positive after this.
I have a question on the Wells Fargo thing. Was that economic outlook delivered by Stagecoach today?
I got it by email last week, so.
I actually heard a reporter call on us that the Stagecoach passed through Hickory today.
Okay. I missed that. All right. This is the North Carolina employment growth from 99 through 2013. This brown line is western North Carolina excluding Asheville during that time span. And this blue line is the rest of North Carolina. So you can see, we were pretty much on par with the rest of the state in western North Carolina in terms of employment growth through 2001. And then, and then the previous recession hit and impacted the rest of the state to a lesser degree than it did us because of the manufacturing. Things kind of leveled out for a few years, saw some growth in the rest of the state in terms of employment. And then the most recent recession hit, which caused an even more dramatic decline in employment in the western part of the state. Whereas the rest of the state has seen some growth, not to their pre-recession level, but, but getting close. So that, that pretty much captures what has been going on in western North Carolina. This, this slide amazed me when I, I didn't realize this. This is the share of employment gains in North Carolina for Durham, Raleigh, and Charlotte. For the last four years, seven out of every 10 jobs created in the state have located in Durham, Raleigh, and Charlotte. That was, to me, that was amazing. And then if you go back to five years prior to that, about, was that 55, 60% of all jobs created in the state located in those three areas. So 30% of the rest of the jobs, the rest of the state got. So that's, that was, to me, that was, that was, just struck me as amazing that, that they have seen that much employment growth or that percentage share of employment growth in those, those three areas. Now, having seen this slide, this one surprised me a little bit too. This is North Carolina employment growth as through February 2014. Down here is the year-over-year percentage increases and here is the three-month percentage change. And the size of these, these circles just represent the size of the metro area. So what this tells, you have expanding economies here and recovering economies here and contracting or decelerating economies down here. Hickory, over year-over-year, has actually outperformed six other metro areas in the state in terms of the metro, our metro area. Has outperformed six other metro areas in the state in terms of year-over-year, the percentage change in employment growth. Now, it's been fairly nominal, but given the previous two slides that I showed, that's probably not bad. And then you can see, you know, Raleigh, Cary, Durham Chapel Hill, and of course Wilmington has been off the charts as, as of late. So that was actually, you know, you want to be up in this cluster, not, but you don't want to be down in this cluster with these decelerating or contracting metro areas in terms of employment growth. So we're right in the middle in terms of employment growth in terms of, you got six below you and seven ahead of you. So I thought that was not horrible news, not where we'd like to be, but a lot better than where we could be. So that's just some background on where we've been. Looking forward, budget development process, number of positives in the budget development process for the upcoming year. Good news is, the city's done a good job of protecting its fund balance. You have a goal of a 25% general fund balance. You've been able to maintain that throughout the recession. Most revenues are stable. We're not seeing any growth. We're not seeing necessarily a decline. We would like to see some growth, but we're not declining. So we've been stable for the last couple of years and that seems like it's continuing. General fund, based on the debt we have right now, will be debt-free in, in five years. So we're not heavy on the debt side at all. Water and Sewer Fund is a little solid financial footing. Feel good about where they are. We have seen a recent uptick in economic development activity. If you think Hall or Hosiery, the Maritz Project, the project you heard tonight with Lowry Mill and Transportation Insight, the old Piedmont Wagon Building, Cloninger Mill, we have seen, we're starting, it feels like to see some momentum. There's some things, other things I'm not mentioning that are also bubbling out there. That hasn't come through in terms of new tax base creation to a large degree at this, at this point, but it is, it is moving us in the right direction. So we do feel good about what we've been seeing the last, last year in particular. So, we do feel good about what we've been seeing the last, last year in particular. We have been able to maintain, we're not going to be coming to you and trying to play catch-up on the capital side with our upcoming year's budget. We've done a pretty good job over the years of maintaining our equipment and vehicle replacement schedule. That's not something you want to get behind on. And we've continued to put money in capital reserves, so we feel good about that. So, there are some positives moving into the budget development process. There's also some challenges. Our property tax revenue as a whole is still below where we were in '07, '08, although it has recovered some, but still below where we were six years ago. Sales tax revenue is the same way. Again, it's seen even probably percentage-wise stronger recovery, but still below the '07, '08 levels. That's been a challenge. We're not seeing any, I mentioned a lot of projects that are coming through, but we're not seeing a net increase in our property tax base yet. Hopefully, that will change. And we're seeing about, taking the property tax revenue out, we're seeing about a 1% growth net in all other revenues, particularly in the general fund. A challenge this year, we're going to lose what's called our hold harmless revenue that we get from the state that replaced the revenue they took from us 11 years ago. It expires. Do you think, well, $255,000 on a $45 million budget isn't a lot, but it is, particularly when your revenues aren't growing and your expenditure pressures are increasing. So, that's, we're feeling that. And again, the SAFER grant will have fully expired at the end of this year, and that was the grant that added the latter company and nine new firefighters at the police department, at the fire department five years ago. We are seeing some, feeling some cross-cost pressures on some of our energy costs, maintenance, resurfacing, street resurfacing. There's some issues there we're focusing in on. Not for this coming year FY '14, '15, but for FY '15, '16. This budget may seem easy compared to what we might be looking at with FY '15, '16, particularly with the privilege, what's being discussed with the privilege license revenue, the state wanting to basically scrap that source of revenue. For us, that means $1.1 million, which is over two pennies on the city's property tax rate, is what it equates to. So, that's something that, again, wouldn't impact us this coming year, but potentially the next year. In addition to that, had some commerce, revaluation will be effective, the new, excuse me, the new values will be effective January 1, 2015. Had some conversations with county tax office. The way they summarized it was like this. The last revaluation we had, which took effect January 1, 2011, basically captured two years of a depressed real estate market. This revale will capture four full years of a somewhat depressed real estate market. So, we're a little bit, we don't know what the numbers look like. He wouldn't give me any hard numbers, but we're focused in on revaluation that will impact the FY '15, '16 budget and what that might mean. So, that's just something on the radar screen. Okay. Some things that the city has done, past six years to kind of cope. And I give you this information, setting you up for the meetings, for budget meetings that we're on the verge of having. We focus intensely on the personnel side, trying to control or reduce personnel costs. We did a retirement incentives offering twice, had a total of 55 employees who are eligible to retire, take us up on that incentive and retire. That gives us a lot of latitude to either eliminate positions, do departmental reorganizations, take some full-time positions, make them part-time. It gives you a lot of latitude to work within the organization. And in addition to that, the hiring freeze that we have had in place has been going on since January of 2009. We've loosened up on that a little bit, but that is, that, the hiring freeze has caused what's referred to as lapsed salaries, which is basically why we're able to put some money in the fund balance at the end of the year. So, we're not putting money in the fund balance because our revenues are growing. We're putting money in the fund balance because we tightened down on having a hiring freeze for what's referred to as non-critical positions. So, we've focused intensely on the personnel side to try to control costs over the last six, and been pretty successful, I think, at it. As far as the elimination of positions, over the last six years, we've had a net reduction in positions of 22. If you go back 10 years, we've had a net reduction of 36. That doesn't count positions that we've added, because we have added some. We added nine with the SAFER grant in the fire department. So, the gross number is higher, but the net number over the last 10 years is 36 positions fewer today than we had then. We've brought contracted services in-house and not added new staff. That was particularly with landscaping services for parks and recreation, as well as public services, landscape services. We bought about $120,000 worth of contracted services in-house and didn't add any staff to do the extra work. We've done debt refinancing twice with the low-interest rates we've been able to take advantage of. We've tapped into, you know, a fairly strong general fund balance to fund some CIP projects and purchases that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise to stay on course with that. Again, related to the personnel side of the house, we've implemented a compliance-based health insurance program where, as an, we tell, as an employee, I have to take responsibility for my health, and if I don't, we have a health risk assessment done every year that measures various things, and depending on where the health risk assessment comes in, I have to contribute, potentially contribute to my health insurance. So, we want employees to take ownership of their health, to keep them healthy, but to also keep our insurance costs down. So, that's been a pretty effective program. We've been able to keep our health insurance costs pretty flat.
And we're self-insured.
We're self-insured, yes. We eliminated longevity benefit for new employees, eliminated the retiree health insurance benefit for new employees. We've incrementally, we've been moving the solid waste fund to be self-supporting. For every dollar we increase the solid waste fee, it saves the general fund $144,000 because the general fund augments or what it takes to run our solid waste operation. We've moved the airport towards being self-supporting. Our workers' comp fund, two years ago, had a $1 million deficit. It now has a $400,000 surplus. We established as a result, because we had established an executive safety committee to really focus in on workers' comp issues, safety issues, and it's been very effective in bringing our workers' comp costs down. We've turned that deficit around in the course of three years. We've reduced library hours, of course, the, you know, about closing the swimming pools. We've reserved money, fund balance for fuel spikes. We renegotiated school resource officer contract with the Hickory Public Schools to get more money from the school system, and Chief Atkins has secured funding from the state for our communications center. Ladies, we're here tonight. And we also, the county, we asked the county to increase what's called the rural, Hickory Rural Fire Tax District to cover the cost that we incur of providing that service to the rural district. So, we went from three, the rural district went from a 3-cent rate to a 7-cent rate to help the city, that was a few years ago, to cover our common fire department, for providing that service to the rural district. So, I know I went over a lot of information there, but I wanted to get some of that ahead of our meetings on the budget. Thank you all.
The budget meetings, they're starting, those when?
Well, we've been having staff budget meetings for quite a while, and, you know, we'll be getting with you all on budget meetings, and of course, have budget public meetings coming up in the next month.
The, Mr. Leonetti again? Rehabilitation loan program?
Yep. We'll call Mr. Dave Leonetti back to the podium to present changes to the housing rehabilitation loan program.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. I'm going to briefly discuss some proposed changes to our city's housing rehab program. These kind of came about because the citizens advisory committee that you all appoint to oversee and provide citizen input on the community development block grant program, they kind of were asking me some questions about kind of how to take our, improve and simplify our rehab programs, and also to kind of improve their effectiveness. And to give you a little background, our rehab loan program currently offers loans to low-to-moderate income homeowners to assist with necessary repairs to homes. These loans can be up to 20% and carry, $20,000 and carry a 3% interest rate. Many of the changes that we're proposing tonight are really aimed at simplifying the program and providing guidance to the citizens advisory committee when they review the applications. And in addition to that, they're also aimed at providing a little more access to the funding for some different groups. Just to give you some idea of exactly who we're talking about, the current income limits for the housing rehabilitation loan program, really the number currently that we focus on, because we only have one program currently, that's what I'm going to get to, is this 80% of the area median, this, 80% of the area median income. So, for a family of four, you're talking about those making less than $39,500 in their household. And the very low income limit is for, it would be 50% of the area median income, so Some of the proposed changes to the program, we're simplifying and reducing the eligible repairs, the only those that are going to bring the structure into compliance with minimum quality standards. Now, that's not to say that we're going to, if you have a floor that's rotted out, that we're going to, you know, not put vinyl on it or something like that. I mean, we'll still, obviously, if there's a necessary repair to fix something, we're still planning on, we'll still need to do as much as to take it into a, in compliance with those minimum housing standards and with Section 8 minimum housing quality standards. But we're no longer proposing to do kind of extra more cosmetic things. There were some things in those guidelines that allowed for some more cosmetic repairs, and the committee kind of recommended sort of going more towards the, you know, the bare bones, the things that make the house livable, and focusing on those. Also, they were looking at more explicit underwriting criteria for loans. One of the things that the current guidelines did not give the committee a whole lot of guidance on what they should be looking for when they're approving these loans. So, some of the guidelines, you have the whole list in your, in your agenda packet, but some of those criteria include a more explicit debt-to-income ratio, and these are all guidelines in the sense that the committee can, in individual cases, make exceptions to those. Recommendations on basic credit scores, and also talking about not, obviously, lending more than what the house is worth. And that's one of the things that we've run into, unfortunately, and there's not a whole lot that we can do on our level, but we're running into a lot more folks that are coming to us that have first and second mortgages on their house, and there's not, we can't offer another loan when the house already has, you know, two and three liens on it. So, that's one of the issues that we've seen, and that's why, over the last 10 years, you've seen the number of these loans drop a little bit, where we were doing $150,000 of housing rehabilitation. Now, we're doing, last year, I think we did around 80, $80,000, and this year, actually, we're probably only going to be doing about 55,000 or 60,000. So, the other proposal is the addition of a deferred loan program for very low-income applicants, and going back, those are the folks making less than 50% of the area median income. We get a number of folks that come to us for assistance in this area, and it's very difficult for those applicants to meet the loan criteria. And as you know, we apply for urgent repair funds every year from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, but those, almost, I mean, we always run out of funds long before we satisfy the amount of need that we have in the community. To, you know, overview the deferred loan program a little more, in a little more depth, because that's the most substantive change to these guidelines available, it would be only available to those applicants making less than 50% of the area median income. That's $24,700 for a family of four. No payments would be required on the loan, provided that the home is maintained as the homeowner's permanent residence. The loan would come due when the property is sold or otherwise ceases to be the borrower's principal residence. For example, if they started renting it out, then the loan would come due. This would be an interest-free loan, and 50% of the loan balance would be forgiven if the homeowner remains in the house for five years. This is sort of mimicked off of the urgent repair program, where, but the difference is, the urgent repair program, it's fully forgiven, $1,000 a year, so after six years, there would be no remaining balance. So, this would still generate some program income as these properties turn over. The program would have a $15,000 lifetime maximum for repairs, and like I said previously, a lot of the homeowners in this income classification, that below the 50%, they need housing assistance, but really cannot afford additional monthly payments that are required by the current program. And then the loan program for those making between 50 and 80% of the area median income, that would basically stay the same, where they would be fully amortized loans that they would make monthly payments on. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion or discussion? Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mr. Meisner. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Any appointments? Matter's not on the agenda? General comments?
Farmer's Market starts tomorrow.
Call Mr. Thompson. Legislative reception next Tuesday in the lobby. There will be refreshments, right?
What time Tuesday?
About next Tuesday.
Two weeks.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, I'm sorry. It's at least fifteen.
Spring break next week. We'll call that off there.
Oh, yeah. We're not doing that next week. That'll be the last Tuesday of the month, 6:30 to 7:30 in the lobby. Chance to meet and greet our delegates who are heading to Raleigh. Swimming lessons are starting again. I heard them advertised. If you know of someone who needs to learn to swim, and the city has, the city's program, we'll pay for that without regard to need, although we prefer that people who can pay the YMCA for the lessons, pay them. But if you can't, or if you just don't want to get your swimming lessons. Anything else?
The center's a nice program last, this past Wednesday at the, last Wednesday at our Baker Playground for the Prevent Child Abuse Week or Month, I think we declared as the city and the county. See 2,000 pinwheels out there on a very breezy day and a very beautiful day. We had a couple hundred people, I think. It was my guesstimate from county, that it's just a beautiful place honoring a little earth, and hoping for the future of no child abuse.
And Food Channel had a, did a segment on Hickory. Anything else? Okay.
Crawdads, crawdads are playing.
Which way?
Crawdads are playing, and if you haven't seen the new stadium, the renovated stadium, you need to get out and see it. Really looks nice and enhances the experience. We have a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated in the minutes, on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Lael. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. We will return here after the closed session to conduct any discourse that comes out of that session, or to adjourn, and/or to adjourn the meeting. Thank you for being here.